May I have a motion to?
I'll make that motion that we convene the regular business meeting.
Motion has been made and seconded by Chair and Mr. Lynch. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Movement to Mayor's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. You know, since this is the last council meeting of the year, I use my comments to first, with the council and our residents, a happy holiday season and a safe and fulfilling 2023. And second, I want to thank the council for the things that we were able to do together during this year for the benefit of the people of our town. And give the council and the residents my commitment to limit, if not eliminate, those controllable attitudes and actions on my part that could hamper the quality of positive and constructive work that the council and I might be able to do during the year 2023. Other comments will focus on two items. The first is Resolution Number 22-304 that I have placed on tonight's meeting agenda with the request that it be favorably considered by the council. This resolution asks the council to approve a new partnership agreement between the township and our police athletic league, known as the PAL, for the conduct of a host of programs and activities that the municipality offers our residents of all ages. The municipality's current multi-year partnership agreement with the PAL expires at the end of this year, and this newly negotiated partnership agreement will carry us through the year 2026. This partnership agreement was put together through a host of meetings and discussions involving PAL Director Vernon Police Lieutenant Jason Hall, PAL Assistant Director Amy Hackett, Vernon Director Recreation Community Affairs, Michelle Downtane, and me. The community programs and activities that are listed in this agreement are the ones that the PAL agrees to assume full responsibility for taking the lead in planning, organizing, directing, coordinating, implementing, and controlling. However, because of the teamwork relationship between the PAL Director Downtane and the volunteers on the Board of Recreation, the PAL will be actively involved in many of the other community programs and activities that we offer our residents. The $45,000 annual compensation that this agreement proposes that the town pays the PAL for the services and support that they will provide our town is the same amount paid to PAL under the agreement that expires at the end of this year. The municipality has had some type of service agreement with the PAL since at least 2016. We have had this type of agreement because it has been very beneficial to our town from a financial and quality and quantity of municipal services standpoint. From what I've learned from attending meetings and seminars at the League of Municipalities Convention and from talking to mayors of municipalities in Sussex County, as well as mayors in other parts of our state, Vernon is somewhat unusual and unique from the standpoint of our heavy reliance on a combination of volunteers and our PAL organization to provide a very large range of municipal recreation and other quality of life services to our town's residents. For example, we rely heavily on a combination of volunteers and our PAL organization to provide municipal programs and activities such as a Safety Town program for those entering kindergarten, our annual K through six great fishing derby, our Arts in the Park series for those ages five and under, our Sidewalk Arts Festival, our annual Easter egg hunts, our nature walks with the mayor events for our young ones, several other programs for early age children, including, but not limited to, introduction to sports such as basketball, lacrosse, and wrestling, our annual eight-week summer programs, our pickup programs for soccer, lacrosse, volleyball, and basketball, our senior citizen exercise programs, our 5K training programs, our annual 5K races, our annual Vernon Day celebrations, our annual Halloween event, which is currently the trick-or-tail event, which is very successful, that's held at Maple Grange Park, our summer and fall movie nights, our yoga programs, our archery programs, our annual municipal holiday tree lighting, just to name a few. The value and importance to our residents of these, plus the host of other community programs and activities not listed here, is evidenced by the large and growing number of residents who participate in, who attend, and who express their enjoyment and appreciation of these community programs and activities. The financial benefit of providing these community programs and activities through a combination of volunteers and our PAL organization can be measured in the savings of municipal tax dollars when compared to what other towns spend on their community programs and activities. And many of the more costly community programs and activities that are offered by some towns don't even come close to matching the quality and the quantity of the community programs and activities that are offered by Vernon through the combination of our many volunteers and our PAL organization. For example, the neighboring town of West Milford is similar to Vernon in the number of residents and in several other pertinent ways. However, a review of their budget reveals that for 2022, they budgeted to pay 171% more in salaries and 200% more in operating costs, as did Vernon, to provide the same or similar types of community programs and activities. Vernon's cost savings are due directly to the strong support that our town gets from our PAL organizations and the outstanding support that our town gets from a host of volunteers. We want to continue to provide our residents the type of quality of life enhancement programs and activities that make Vernon a good town in which to live and to raise a family, and we want to continue to do this in the most cost-effective and efficient manner. This new partnership agreement with the PAL will ensure that we can do this through at least the year 2026. My second and final comment relates to the fact that as we come to the close of the year 2022, I want to take one more opportunity to highlight the fact that this year marks the 230th anniversary of our town's establishment as a municipality. In honor of this anniversary, our Director of Communications and Community Affairs, Mrs. Downtane, and our very active Board of Recreation, collaborated with our high school's arts and design program to have students in this program to design and create a piece of artwork celebrating Vernon's 230th anniversary. The winning piece of artwork is the creative work of Mrs. Caitlin Tennell, a Vernon High School senior. Caitlin is an active participant in the high school theater program and is passionate about creating art, both on paper and on the computer. Caitlin plans to attend Coates Town University, where she will major in computer graphics and money and marketing. We took Caitlin's winning design and turned it into a flag that will be hung in an appropriate place in the municipal center. I invited Caitlin and her parents, Mr. Jay and Mrs. Michelle Tennell, to be here with us tonight so that the mayor and the council can formally thank her for this gift to the township. At this time, I ask that Mrs. Downtane, perhaps some of the individuals from the rec department, would you please unfurl this flag commemorating Vernon's 230th anniversary? Show it to the council and then show it to the others. Rum roll.
Oh, we gotta show it to the council first.
Celebrating 230 years. See, we got very many over there.
Yeah.
It's.
That is lovely. That is. That's awesome.
Very nice job. Very nice.
Very nice, yeah.
How come the bear doesn't have a bag of garbage in it, Tim?
Great job. Really good job.
On behalf of the mayor and the council, I want to project you what's a certificate of appreciation. And council members, it says, "This certificate is awarded on behalf of the mayor and council to Caitlin Tennell." Am I pronouncing your name right? Tennell. "In recognition of your outstanding service by designing the community banner, celebrated the 230th anniversary of Vernon Township." And Mr. Council President and council member, I would be honored if you would just pause for a few minutes and come down so that we can take a photo with her and her family, and I'll make sure that she gets it.
Thank you.
I think that you guys wanted to present us something, right? Wanted to present her some kind of hoodie bag. Caitlin, you're awesome, girl. You're really awesome.
Thank you. So where are you guys?
This is wonderful. I love this flag. Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
You want me to hold that for you? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Come on, get in the picture.
And I'll make sure Caitlin gets that. And let's pay it well with Caitlin and her parents, too.
Certainly, yes.
Yes. Thank you. Jay, come on up. Thank you. I think I'll leave that the council likes. Like, isn't awesome? Well, it's, you know, it's this burn. You know, we got our greenery and it's really like.
Yeah.
My gosh, that's right.
It's great that we collaborated with the school.
I think that's fantastic.
Yeah. If I can be out of the way.
Yeah, sorry.
You bet.
I wonder, you know, they have these... Do you have occasion to have patches printed for particular issues, you know, Breast Cancer Awareness Month or something like that? A patch, you know, for a sleeve patch or, you know?
We typically don't only could.
It is very difficult. Oh, okay. I thought maybe we could do.
Make sure to actually.
Yeah.
In the military, they, you know, they seem to have these patches coming out.
Somebody wants to volunteer and donate. They over separately.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Council President, it is my comments, and thank all my guests for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. May I have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucieri. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carries. Floor is open for comments, limited to three minutes on agenda items only. Is there anybody here who would like to comment on something on the agenda? Oh, okay. Is there anybody in the skybox?
Yes, I have pegged Distasi.
Mrs. Distasi?
Hi, I just wanted to congratulate Caitlin on a beautiful design. I think she is a real pride of Vernon. Thank you for all the hard work that went into this.
Thank you.
I do have a question, and that would be, can you take a vote tonight on something that is not on the agenda, which would be 22-304 that the mayor referred to, and that is the PAL agreement?
We have an updated agenda pegged. Right?
Okay, it's not posted on the web. It's not posted on the website.
The agenda
Okay.
reflects 22-304 and reflects this agreement, and it'll be presented tonight. It'll be brought forward.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're quite well. Is there anyone?
Yes, Jessica Palladini.
Mrs. Palladini.
I was just going to ask what Peg asked. So the resolution is not on the updated agenda on the website?
I don't know if it is or not, but it was my fault.
Okay, well, I was not looking for fault. I just wondered, how could I get?
That's what happened. There were some questions that I had, and I omit, and I held the item from being placed on the agenda. The questions were resolved by virtue of conversation with the chief, who's done an absolutely fantastic job, as, you know. If he were a racehorse, he'd be, you know, scooting around the first turn, doing very awfully well, as well as Mrs. Donnell Bright. So, but so that's why it was omitted. I did instruct the council, the clerk, to include it in our handout, so it's being voted on as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome. Merry Christmas. Anyone else?
I don't see any other hands up.
Seeing no one else coming forward, normally in the skyboxes may have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Bucieri to close the floor, and seconded by Lynch. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, move to approval of minutes. All council members have received Yeah, all council members have received copies of minutes of our executive session of November 28, 2022. May I have a motion to place those on the floor for consideration?
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for November 28, 2022.
Motion is made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucieri. Are there any additions, comments, or, I'm sorry, corrections or deletions on the minutes?
No.
Hearing none, may I have a motion? I'm sorry, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice President Bucieri, yes. Councilmember Lynch?
Yes.
Councilmember Tadrick?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving to our consent agenda. If you have any items that you wish to have separated, please. I'm going to move that we separate Resolution 22-302 regarding the issue between the township and Mr. Wallace. That'll be voted on separately. Resolution 22-296, refund overpayment, Block 576, Lot 86, Amrock. Resolution 22-297, refund overpayment, Block 86, Lot 5, Goodman Dean Incorporated. Resolution 22-298, authorizing change order number one of contract for proposed improvements of milling and paving to various streets within Vernon Township with Tilcon, New York Incorporated. Resolution 22-299, authorizing change order number one of contract for proposed improvements of milling and paving on Old Coach Road and Pleasant Valley Drive with Tilcon, New York Incorporated. Resolution 22-300, a budget transfer, budget resolution, balance transfers. Resolution 22-301, temporary budget debt service, and resolution, I'm sorry, 22-304, resolution authorizing an agreement with Vernon Township Athletic League to administer and run recreation programs. May I have a motion to have these items placed on the floor for consideration?
I'll make that motion, Council President.
Motion is made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any comments or questions on any of these particular issues?
I just wanted to comment, it's a nice, when I saw the change order, I was afraid it was gonna be higher.
Yeah, me too.
Nice to see that the cost went down. Something you don't usually see when you get a change order. So I don't know what, how that happened, but I think that's good news.
Thank you. Do we know anything? Nothing else? I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Bucieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch?
Yes.
Councilmember Tadrick?
Yes, yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 22-302, resolution settlement agreement and general release between the township of Vernon and Joseph Wallace. Do you have that put on the floor for consideration?
I make a motion that we table this resolution.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, I would like to amend, ask you if you would amend that to tabling this until the reorganization meeting agenda?
I will amend my motion, yes.
So amended?
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Opening public hearing on ordinance 22-24, an ordinance approving Town Center redevelopment plan amendment to add Block 391, Lot 11, to the TCI Town Center overlay zone and to permit outdoor storage with buffering in the town center area. May I have a motion to place this on?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucieri. May I have a motion to open the floor to the public on 22-24? Second reading. Motion made by Mrs. Bucieri. Is there a second?
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Lynch. The floor is open to the public on 22-24. If there's any comment or questions on it? Is there anyone here wishing to adjust this? Anybody in the skybox?
No, I don't have any hands up.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to close.
I'll make that motion.
The
And I'll second that.
Motion is made by Mrs. Bucieri and seconded by Mr. Lynch. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, the motion is on the floor. Any members of the council have any question or comment? I do want to mention that Mr. Tadrick and I visited the the business, and we spoke with the managing person there, and the information that we were given was very, very informative and very, very pleasing. So I think it'll be a great improvement for the township and certainly for their own business. May I have a roll call vote?
Yes. Vice President Bucieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch?
Yes.
Councilmember Tadrick?
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open the floor to the public?
I'll make that motion, Council President.
Any issue? Motion is made by Mr. Lynch. This is for public comment, limited to five minutes on any topic. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucieri. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Please come forward. Give us your name, and there should be a little.
Come closer, yeah.
There should be a tag sheet there you can sign on.
Hi, I'm Ann Larson.
Bye, Ann.
See you all again before the holiday.
It's very great.
So letting me speak. Last week at the other meeting that you had, I did voice my concerns about the revale that's going on. And since that time, I've even had more time to think about it. My 90-year-old mother just got a letter in the mail that they're evaluating her home again. They were just there last summer, this past summer. So at this point, this is really, this is harassment. I don't know what you have in mind for the 2023 budget. You gotta get rid of this nonsense. You can't be harassing people. When that assessor spoke last week, and she said she randomly chose different neighborhoods, there's nothing random about a random assessment, about a random anything. And random selection is never random. So, you know, you have people being visited two times in a row. This is just, it's going down the wrong way, okay? We have another business that's just leaving town, I just found out today. Another business in the town center will be closing up shop. So things are not go-go-go any longer, and it's time to stop and save some money, like this ridiculous expense. It is, I believe, a harassment. I believe they should have a warrant if they're gathering information, like she said, if it's a fact-finding mission. So in that respect, I like to say, maybe we should just have an opt-out form. And people who are aware of it, now that we know what she said, she is just data collecting in some cases, let's just have an opt-out form. You're not collecting data at my house. It's off limits, okay? Because this is just, you know, you just can't keep doing this to people.
You know, the whole basis for tax assessment is rooted in law.
I understand.
It is not just something that we, tax assessor or anybody else chooses to do. Data, data collection might have been a wrong term.
But it was our term.
Okay, I agree. But sometimes people misspeak. But certainly, when you go into a home, you're looking to verify what the information that is on file in the tax office corresponds to what is actually in the home. Now, if you go in there, or I should say, if the tax assessor goes in, or this person who's doing the evaluation goes in and sees that there is no finished basement and that you only have two bedrooms, not three. And that that information differs from what is in the house versus what is in the tax office. The township has a responsibility to correct that. So one is, you know, is correct, that being the state of the condition of the house, okay? Same thing with refusing entry. You have every right to refuse entry to anybody subject to a warrant, okay? And I don't think you're going to get tax people coming around with blanket warrants. I don't believe judges are going to do that. So, but they do have the right at that point to assume that the information that they're going to put down is correct. And if they put, if they believe, in many cases, they'll simply say, "We believe that there's a finished basement. We believe that there is three bedrooms. We believe that there's, you know, you know, remodeled cabinets and kitchens," whatever else was being done. Then it's the homeowner's responsibility to accept the higher tax. All right, so now, what would you rather have, the higher tax or have somebody who can make an appointment with you if you're uncomfortable by being there alone? So you can have either your husband or another person there with you come in and verify what is in the house versus what is on the sheet coming from the township? Or you can refuse to do it? Either way, you're gonna, you know, one is going to be maybe to your benefit. The other one might not be to your benefit.
Exactly.
So why would you wanna not allow entrance to verify what's going on? I remember I checked my own card that was in the town hall and not this past revale, one prior to it. There was an error. They assumed something that wasn't in fact, and I had it corrected.
Right.
So, you know, it's
You didn't wait for him to come around and do it again next year. You had it corrected, right?
Yes, but what we're looking at now is a situation where there are two forms of tax computation, okay? One has a revale, which is a substantially more expensive proposition, done every 10 years, and one done 20% of the houses, you know, every part of every year, okay? And, but every house will be
That's not possible when you're getting the same house three times.
I don't, and I don't disagree with you, okay? I don't, and I don't disagree with you, okay? Because something has to be done about that. Because you're not the first one, you're not the second, you're not the third. You're probably up into double digits where people have talked to me and said, how come I'm being hit again? So it obviously is either poor selection criteria, you know, or done on purpose.
I, I think, I can, I think because there was a, an inspection done right prior, right? You know, that this first year, there were houses that would have had it back-to-back if they were in that twenty percent. And I think if you have questions, you can ask Kristen which neighborhoods have been done, because that's public information.
She didn't speak to that last week. I noticed that. She did tell us that the county, the county tax board was listing it on our conversation, which I, I
She did say that.
Yeah, she did say that. Is that meant to intimidate?
Oh, no, no.
I think it was just if you had questions. But I think you can ask her which neighborhoods she has done. I think, I think she has a plan to get the entire town inspected within the five-year period, twenty percent each year. So she has that mapped out. So if you, if you wanna reach out to her, I'm sure she'll be happy to talk to you and explain.
I wanna end that. I don't need to talk to her. I think it's, the whole policy should end. If the law is that it has to be done once every ten years. And as she mentioned the other day that, oh, well, you know, we, they're, they're talking, maybe we should do it every year. You know what? Let Fort Lee fight that battle for us. Let these other towns fight that battle. And we should sit back and be the last to comply. At least we'll be saving people all that expense.
But we
Of paying for those assessments annually.
But here's the problem. We take our lead not from what we are doing here. We take our lead from the county tax board and
And we were the first, she said.
We were the first, but
So that's our lead, we're leading.
So there are also any number of townships that are also following. Because that's what you're trying to shift to. I don't know if I like it myself, because the only, the only time you're gonna see the benefit of this is when you sell your house. Because that's when you get the benefit of the higher assessment. However, if the market changes, and it's beginning to, at eight points, seven points with, you know, interest rates, you're not going to see the same strong real estate market that you've seen in the last three or four years, or two or three years. So you're gonna see that drop. Now, that should show a commensurate drop with real estate values. And that should be reflected in the, the more recent assessments. So if a house that was previously assessed at four hundred thousand dollars and when it was comps were going on it by, you know, two hundred, you know,
Whatever.
You know, being sold previously. And now there, those comps are non-existent because you can't find them. Because people can't buy new homes or refusing to buy new homes at seven percent. Then you run into, then you're, you know, you, you should see a commensurate drop in the numbers.
That could easily be done across the board.
However, the other
Well, it is done across the board. Even though not every home is inspected, every home's value is adjusted.
I understand.
Right? Like, I'm saying these in the right words and now, yeah, assessed. So everyone, even if your house hasn't been inspected by the appraiser, you still could see a change in your assessed value, up or down. Okay, all right.
But that could be done without paying these assessors to go around to, to individual.
You can't. Assessment, assessment has, change in the value of real estate must be done by a, by a profession. Okay, so you're, 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 you're a tax assessor. You are? Okay, so you, you just can't walk in and say, you know, have somebody walk in. But the thing that you, you need to also understand is that maybe during this recent hot time that we had in real estate, people were willing to pay an exorbitant amount of money, much more than the, than the asking price would have been, should have been reflected to buy a home in order to move from where they are to Vernon Township. That, when that happens, it kind of, like, you know, it, it inflates the price here. Not because of the true value, but because somebody was willing to pay a higher con.
Market will bear.
That's a market will bear, exactly. And we can't help that.
I get that. It's just that I feel like we don't have to let people in the house, then why don't you have an opt-out form? We can save the visit. We can save whatever it is we're paying that person to go around, driving around, going to these people and harassing these homeowners. I'm opting out. My mom's not letting these people in the house again. Ninety years old, I don't want them in the house, okay?
I don't disagree, but look, the point I was trying to make is, were you to do, were we to do this? There would, you're here by yourself. Were we to do this? I would venture to say, and that went into effect, we'd have six times you who were sitting here saying
Why should I?
You know, well, no. Opting out, you know, how can you raise my taxes when no one even visited my home to verify in fact that my basement, you know, was finished or was not finished or whatever, you know?
Well, let me ask you this. When he comes along and he, and he says, oh, your basement is finished. Are we gonna then stop all the, the process of having to do inspections on that? Do we have to, are we going to, since we're taking the money on that finished basement, are we now gonna forego the, the inspection fees?
Well, no, if, no, if in fact the, the basement is finished and it's noted, okay, you, and based upon the way we're, they're currently doing it with the assessments. Correct me if I'm wrong, you know, if you know about, uh, what's going to happen is that it'll, the township will continue to evaluate the, the, the value of that home. But it won't do it with another, shouldn't do it with another visit for at least another five years.
Right.
And
Right.
On that particular home.
And if you were talking about, like, a finished basement being done without permits, I don't know.
Well, if they're, if we're willing to take the money for the taxes.
So, but, but, so that's another aspect of an important point in doing inspections, because it does catch things that were done without permits. And then those things are addressed. So any, any change
So here's the thing, now if you're doing that, you're going under false premises. You're going in these homes, well, it is, you're on a fact-finding mission.
They're going for the purpose of ensuring that everything that's on the property card matches what's at
It's looking for permits, you are going under false premises. That's a false premise. You just said it.
Oh, I don't think she said that.
She said if they happen to see things that don't have permits, it'll flag that.
Say if, if something required, if someone put an addition on their house and added another bedroom and a bathroom, if for some reason there wasn't permits. I mean, and that was put into the property record card. I will double-check with the assessor, but there should be some sort of communication between the assessor's office and the construction office. Because for the sole purpose of safety, something, there should, something should have happened where, and it could have been that there were permits taken out and maybe there was miscommunicated, there was no communication between the construction office and the assessor's office to let them know those permits were closed and that the property record card could be updated. So it could be one way or the other, right? So, but there is going to be some sort of communication to ensure that some, that things were done correctly and safely.
Yeah, okay. I think a lot of people would like to opt out. One more thing, I appreciate it. Yeah, I know, but, but we chatted together. It wasn't just me speaking. But while we're here, the ad for the, have you seen the ad for the new business administrator? Okay, you, you guys are okay with that? Do you think that that's the kind of ad that would draw people to say, you know what, I'm gonna get this job? I, I feel like you start an ad out with how many square feet the, or how many square miles the town has, how many people. It doesn't mention grant writing. I think that, you know, maybe a little finesse in writing an ad to actually bring people into the ad, to, to apply for the job rather than stopping people from coming here to apply for the job. And that is what my, my perception was, like, maybe you really don't want people to apply.
Thank you.
That's improper.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much. Wonderful holiday to everybody. Signing in and I'm out of your hair.
We use the same ad that we did before. That doesn't mean it couldn't have been different.
It, it, it could be a lot better, you know, I mean, so, thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Very much. Is there anyone in the skybox?
Yes. Peg DeStacy?
Mr. Stacey?
Hi, I just wanted to, basically, wish everybody a wonderful holiday season and a happy new year and a prosperous new year for Vernon. Now that Anne brought up the ad, I will add, I do believe that it could be better worded as to what qualifications we really want. It is, it is very vague. So I, I, I will agree with her on that. Otherwise, happy new year and merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.
Jessie Palladini?
Mrs. Palladini?
Um, just quickly on that ad, have you corrected the two thousand twenty-two date?
Yes, that was correct.
I was correct. I believe that was probably also picked up by the League of Municipalities in their
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna say that I agree one hundred percent with everything that Anne said. And I think that this program that you're doing is so wrong, and I have to question whether it's even lawful to go into people's homes for data collection. That was the word that was used. I don't think you could go into people's homes just because you suspect that they might have finished a basement or something. Now, the law requires that every property be reevaluated every ten years. Why would you need to do anything differently? I, um, put in an air conditioner and I immediately got a, a reassessment for seven dollars and change more. I'm sorry.
Nothing, I sneezed.
Oh, okay. Okay, God bless you. Um, I, I just, I don't think they have the right to go into a home for that reason. I think that the reason is, um, very sketchy. I, I, I really think that it's a bad, bad program. No matter what you wanna call it, you're going into people's homes to investigate whether they did something without a permit. I don't think you could do that. We all know that it's a fact of life that people cheat and they do things without permits. Okay, drive around, and if you see somebody with a deck on a property that wasn't there before or a swimming pool or a second floor or something, that's one thing. But I really think you're on a very slippery slope going into people's homes. Now, my taxes just went up three hundred dollars. Why? What was the reason for that? Can you give me a reason?
The taxes go up because the amount of money necessary to run the township must be raised with, with, within the, the, the universe that's being taxed.
And you only do that after a revaluation. And you fairly and equitably change people's taxes and tax rates across the board. Not just, suppose you went into a home in settler's notch and found out that, you know, they've done some kind of an improvement. And so, okay, now we better raise everybody's property assessments. I, I really think you need some kind of a meeting, a workshop, something where the public can come and discuss this with you without a three-minute limit, without a five-minute limit. I think this is a big enough problem where the whole town needs to get involved. I personally will never allow anybody to come into my home. Mary Dugan knows I took out a permit to get an air conditioner. I got reassessed. But to go into people's homes to see, well, wait a minute, let's see if they finished a basement. Let's see if they replaced the window and then assess that across the board to everybody. Anne Larson is a professional. She's been in the real estate business for a very long time. And I think she knows what she's talking about. And I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to agree with her every step of the way. Please have a meeting, have a work session meeting or something. Discuss this with the public. And other than that, just Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and may twenty twenty-three be a better year for Vernon Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Palladini. Is there anyone else?
Yes, um, Prisco Josephine?
Mrs. Pris- Mrs. Josephine Prisco. Mrs. Prisco, how are you? Good to hear from you again. Hello? Hello?
Is there any other? I don't know. Yes, I have Walter Marsico.
Mr. Marsico, how are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
Fine.
What was it you said about a warrant to enter someone's house?
How else can you get in somebody's house unless you have a warrant other than by the, the, the blanket coverage that's normally extended to people with, in, in the tax evaluation requirements that township works with?
So why did Mike Burns and Allison LaRoca enter my house?
I, you're, you're asking something that, you're begging the question here. I don't, I don't know that they did.
Here, here's what
They didn't.
Let, let me give everyone some advice.
Excuse me, but excuse me. At this point, we are, I have to consider what you're saying and the situation that you're referring to as a matter under litigation or potential litigation, since you've notified the council as such.
And I'm not Okay, I can, I can still speak.
You can speak, but I'm not going to counsel, I'm not going to comment.
Oh, okay. Well, you just said you need a warrant, so I appreciate that.
Well, I, I had already said that previously on a different matter, okay?
Let, let me, let me tell you.
I'm not going to extend my comments beyond that.
I do know the law quite well. Not only do I know the law quite well, I know UCC code probably better than any one of your construction officials. Like Mr. Westenberger, who launched a five-year harassment campaign against me. This is not going away, Mr. Rizzuto. Just like you and the attorney sitting next to you that condone Marcy's behavior. Do you still condone it? I want an answer.
Mr. Marsico, we're not responding to you.
No, Mr. Marsico. You're not gonna treat me like a child.
No, on the contrary, since, since, again, you've made this an issue of potential litigation, I am not going to comment, nor will the attorney, nor will any other member of the council comment on this particular
It's amazing how things have changed. Now let's move to another matter. Let's go to the taxes. Somebody said that you can, you can look for improvements, things that may have been done without a permit. I assure you, one hundred percent, you cannot do that. That's under false premises. You need to read UCC code and case law. It is right there. It's been done before and it has not upheld. I don't know what's with you guys down there. You, you gotta, you gotta brush up on constitutional rights, search and seizure, tax law? I mean, you cannot just do whatever you want to do and think there are no consequences. I assure you, there are consequences. And I assure you that yourself and the attorney next to you have condoned the behavior of Marcy numerous times at public meetings. That's despicable. And you'll see what's gonna come from that. Thank you. Have a very merry Christmas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm gonna go back to Josephine Prisco.
Mrs. Prisco? Are you muted, Mrs. Prisco?
Yeah. Um, how about Frank Piotrowski?
Mr. Piotrowski. Peter Piotrowski.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Yourself?
Good. Merry Christmas to everybody.
You, sir.
Uh, I just wanted to bring up the, the yearly assessments. So here's, here's my problem with, with the yearly assessments. So just for starters, my taxes in the last two years, since this has been implemented, have gone up almost thirty percent. That's insane. Uh, and what's more insane about it is I don't get garbage pickup. I have roads that are tarred and tarred and stoned that look like, excuse my French, crap. Um, I just feel like it's, we're not getting what we're paying for. Um, and along the lines of yearly assessments, here's my other issue with them. As you mentioned before, Mr. Rizzuto, people paid unprecedented amounts for houses Uh, as you mentioned before, Mr. Rizzuto, uh, people paid uh unprecedented amounts for houses this past year. Um, so much so, people are offering cash. Offers for houses sight unseen. Um, that in itself is crazy. So my problem with that is. These yearly assessments now are based upon those numbers. That people overpaid for homes in this area, not even close to fair market value. We're going to now be assessed on those crazy absorbent prices people paid for homes. I hope, I hope when the market. Comes back down, because it's coming back down. That these assessments will reflect that change in value when it does lower. Because property values are coming down.
I as well.
So I just hope these yearly assessments, if not, you know, if if nothing is done about them and it's not changed back to the ten year. Which allows for m- market fluctuations of this magnitude. Uh, that that we see a significant decrease in our taxes when home values drop this. You know, I want to say in these next two years, because it's going to happen. So is that something? Is that something the the township, the the Vernon residents can count on?
I would I would expect so. I believe when um Miss Miss Yumansky was here last at the last meeting. That question was specifically addressed to her. That could we expect to see a reversal in the trend? Uh, based upon, you know, a cooling real estate market and would that be reflected in lower real estate prices?
Yeah.
And she assured us that it would be. Uh, you know, I'm with you, uh, you know, it's like I want to see it. Before I, you know, before to believe it, you know?
I I just feel like a a ten year, yes, a ten year might be too long, you know, maybe a five year. And and what I just feel like that does, it allows for market fluctuations like this to. I I'll say level off for a sense of a better word.
Yep.
So I just hope that, you know, uh, the council reconsider's doing something with the yearly assessments, because. I see people on Facebook, their assessments went up a thou- hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's that's just craziness. It's it's not, it's not realistic.
I I. I'm not fully sold on this myself, and I've told, I believe I expressed that at the last meeting as well.
Uh, I then I urge the council to to. Try to do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Chris- Prisco, no?
Um, no, her hand is not up anymore, but I do have Christine Dunn.
Mrs. Dunn?
Hi, Christine Dunn, twenty-four seater terrace north Glenwood. I just want, I just wanted to uh a ritter. Uh, agree with what Frank had to say about the um. Assessments. My assessment was done when the housing market was crazy, when it was like so high because everybody was trying to get out of the city. And um. I know I would never get what they said I was gonna get for my house. And the problem is, now that it went up, I know it's never gonna go down. So I just wanna voice my opinion and say that I have a problem with these assessments as well. And there are a lot of other people on Facebook that do too, so.
I I share your concern. I would hope. That the mechanism that. That the that the tax board from, you know. In in. Newton, when they put these two options to us. That indeed, the market, when the market does cool, that. The reduction in real estate values is reflected in lower tax rates.
Well, I just can't ever see them going down once they get.
I I I hear you and um.
I just don't think it was very fair. I thought my taxes, I've lived here probably for fifteen years, and I always thought. My taxes were pretty fair here for what I had. And then now it's jumped probably about fifteen hundred bucks.
Yeah.
So I just don't want this to keep going and going and going.
Well, realize that the township. Only. Has about twenty percent. Of the tax levy for the total. And county is about what, ten percent? And about sixty-five to seventy percent is the school tax, which we don't control. So that.
And plus, I just think Vernon can be a little bit more fiscally responsible, especially with that. Because I've been saying since COVID that like. We're spending too much money on so on stupid things that why can't we wait? I have to wait for certain things at my house. I have to wait for furniture, you know, I haven't bought furniture in fifteen years and I've brought this up to the council before. Because I have to say, you know, everything else is going up. I can't even buy two furniture.
Thank you.
Because it's going to taxes.
Sure. I hear you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're quite welcome. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Mark Heffler.
Mr. Heffler.
Yes, good evening, uh, members of the council, uh, mayor. Uh, happy holidays to all of you. Um, I wasn't on for the whole meeting, so if I if I'm repeating something somebody else said, I do apologize, but just a small public service announcement. Um, hopefully, we all received them, but you know, New Jersey did roll out their anchor program. Um, the Affordable New Jersey Communities for Homeowners and Renters. Um, where if you fall into income limits and you have, you know, owned a piece of property in New Jersey as of. I think it was two thousand nineteen, um, you will qualify for a benefit, so make sure you keep an eye out for those postcards. I think it's up to fifteen hundred dollars that you'll receive back from the state. In order to help help out with your taxes uh in the spring of next year. So look it up. If you didn't get your postcard, find out how to get your data. Um, but um, you know, a a small bit of help uh in the new year for everyone whose taxes, like mine, have gone up. Um, so thanks again and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the information.
Adam, I think that deadline is December thirtieth to fill out. That application. So if you haven't done it yet, just.
Yeah, I think they extended it to the thirty-first of January, actually, according to the website.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna try. Josephine Prisco again.
Mrs. Prisco?
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
That. She did unmute.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Prisco? Nope, I don't have any other hands.
Seeing no one else coming forward, may I have a motion to close the floor of the public?
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, my Mrs. Bucchieri, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carried. Moving on to council comments. Mr. Tadrick. You have anything you would like to?
I'm sorry I wasn't there tonight. I came, uh, hit a positive on COVID over the weekend, so I'm just kinda healing up. Just want to wish everybody uh Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa. Happy New Year. Try to be safe over the holiday period and um enjoy. That's it for me.
Thank you. George?
Thank you, Council President. In the last week, I had the. Finest opportunity that nobody in this room. Was ever being able to do. And that's drive Santa Claus around. I took eight hours on Saturday and drove Santa Claus all through Barry Lakes. And the the look on children's faces. When they see a fire truck alone is is really amazing. But then to have a fire truck that has Santa Claus on it is even better. Unfortunately, nobody says the same thing about cop cars, chief. Because when you see a cop car coming, nobody says, oh, look, there's a cop car. But you do your job well. Please don't don't take it a serious um. But during our timeout. I got to see so many good things. And this is the holiday season. I'm asking everybody. We have a terrible weekend coming. I think it's gonna go down to five hundred below zero or something like that. Anyway, that's what the weatherman is saying, and next thing you know, it's gonna.
They'll make it happen.
Eighty degrees and sunny, but um. Check on your neighbors, check on your friends. Um, it's Christmas. Let's all, we all have kindness in us and it's just a matter of us using it. So with that, I'd like to say. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year. And. Let's all remember that. The reason this season is around. Is to be kind. So let's try to be kind. For one day. One day. And then and then Ja- and then December twenty-sixth, when. That day comes, we could start all over again. Let's see what happens. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mrs. Bucchieri.
Thank you. Um. I can't believe it's it's our last meeting of the year. It didn't like really hit me. So um, I really have enjoyed serving on the council. With you, Mr. Rizzuto, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Taddy these past few days um. With Mr. Sparta and with Mr. Fury, Mr. Shortway. I appreciated um being having the opportunity to serve with. With all of them. Um. I think we've had a good year. I've learned a lot of a lot of things. I look forward to twenty twenty-three. And um, you know, working more for Vernon and uh. Hopefully continuing to move forward um. A positive, as as Mr. Lynch said. Being kind, working forward together with our administration. We have a lot of changes, a lot of challenges coming up, but I think we have a great group of people. Working together here, so I think we can accomplish um some great things for our town, and I'm excited for that. I wish uh everyone a Merry Christmas and um. Happy New Year. Great uh health and blessings for the new year and um. We'll see you on January first.
Thank you. My comments will be a little bit longer. As this will be our last meeting prior to the reorganization meeting. I'd like to take this opportunity to review a few of the issues councils had before them. I believe that the reorganization meeting should be one of positive note and visionary thoughts. This past year, the council has completely changed due to election or illness. And or illness. Mr. Shortway left the council for health reasons, and we all wish him well. As he continues his journey to full health. Mr. Fury has left the council due to the electoral process, and we thank him for his service and his commitment to Vernon Township. It has been readily apparent that there has been a significant difference between the council and the administration. The nature of these differences as presented by the council has always been founded. Not only in its commitment to Vernon Township, but its belief on how these various goals are to be achieved. Over the past twelve months, this council, newly elected and subsequently complimented by Mr. Sparta and Mr. Tadrick. Have all expressed similar views in the necessity to attend to issues arising out of past council and administrative actions. Whether we were successful or not. It was necessary based on the commitments we made to the public and our constituents. In some cases, we were successful. And other issues, we were not, and in a very few times, we were able to reach compromise. I have frequently been asked why I, as council president. Did not express. A more conflicting point of view with the administration. Or a more take a more aggressive stance from opposition to the mayor's comments. Clearly, my answer has and will always be to what end. I do not see continued conflict on it on issues where compromise or required change by statute. Is either not possible or is ignored. To be beneficial to our township. Only when it is possible to have these differing points of view prevail. Is it advisable to use the electoral advantage provided by the voters for the benefit of our community? Should we move more decisively and completely? On achieving these goals. In the coming year, I believe we will have that advantage. As council president, I have tried to use this office to maintain a decree of decor. Not rising to the bait of innuendo and ego. It is in these cases where I have failed. I have offered my apologies to the community. I would like to thank my fellow council members. Mr. Lynch, Mr. Tadrick, and Mr. Sparta for their support this past year. And especially Mrs. Bucchieri as vice president. Her advice and counsel. Have been greatly appreciated and her help in taking over. Council president's responsibilities during the occasion of my wife's Barbara recent passing. Relieve me of significant concerns that needed to be addressed for the township's benefit. I would ask that the clerk. Please take note that the council will hold its reorganization meeting on January one at twelve noon. And to please make the necessary promulgations as required. I would also ask that invitations be issued to Senator Orojo, Assemblyman Worth. County Commissioner Jill Space and Bill Hayden to come and be recognized at our meeting. Finally, on behalf of the council. And myself, I would like to wish our residents, employees, a Merry Christmas. A Happy Hanukkah and a Blessed Kwanzaa. And a very joyous new year. Thank you. And that completes my comments. May I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucchieri, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Out here.
All right, bye, Joe.
Bye.
Feel better.
Thanks.
Have a good nightmare.